Mr. Butler.
Present.
Mr. Calley.
Here.
Mr. Jenkins.
Here.
Mr. McDonald.
Here.
Ms. Qualls.
Here.
Ms. Shulist.
Here.
Ms. Senyard.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Ma'am, we'll call the Fairview Planning Commission meeting for February night to order at 7:00 PM. If you'll join me for the opening prayer and pledge. Lord, we are meeting today to take matters of business, get our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, right thought and speech, impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may reach a successful conclusion. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will go to approval of the agenda. I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jenkins, Rainey. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Ms. Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
We'll move to citizens' comments. Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes from the January 12th, 2021 regular meeting. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Jenkins, Anderson. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go to new business item one. PC Resolution PCO eight dash twenty-one. Site plan Richville Estates subdivision phase one, twenty building lots on twelve point six eight acres. Map forty-three parcel twenty-three. Property owners Richland Estates LLC. We have a few staff comments. Ms. Shulist, would you read those in for me, please?
Of course. Applicant request for variance temporary USPS cluster box to be shown on phase two site plan. Number two, show Lake Road transition detail including milling, cutting, keying, and overlaying asphalt along existing roadway connecting to proposed roadway prior to pre-construction meeting. Item three, required infrastructure in proposed phase two area to be shown as phase one construction if phase two site plan fails approval. And item four, plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-con meeting. Action.
Sorry?
Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove of PC Resolution PC O eight two one.
Thank you very much. Any questions or you'd like to make a motion? So from the staff comments, it appears that there are still some things that need to get done on these plans before they're ready to be approved. Is that correct, Mr. Blackburn?
Yes, just a couple of things. Yeah, so, so Mr. Jenkins, just so we're all aware, I think that the primary question is number two. The variance request for USPS cluster box, we met with the developer on that. That's simply a matter of moving that as a temporary issue. There's no issue there with what we proposed. Item number two, while we have it on there, would simply apply if, in fact, there is that work necessary for the transition onto Lake Grove. If that work is not necessary, then they would not be required to submit that that item.
Thank you, sir. And when will we find out if that work is necessary?
Once the engineer does the work and they go back, they'll submit their construction plans, and if it's required, they'll submit it with the plans. And if not required, then they just simply would be not appear on the construction plans.
So as it sits now, there would be no issues with approving it as it currently sits?
That's that's correct. That's our estimation.
Thank you, sir. Any additional questions?
I don't think I understand the number one variance because this is in reference to phase one, and it says a temporary to be shown on phase two site plan.
Yeah, I'll be glad to explain that to you. As the as the construction plans are drawn and as we're attempting to get mail to the residents in phase one, the location, the permanent location for the phase one cluster box will not be available until some work is done in phase one so we can facilitate that location. So the request was to simply locate that in what will be future phase two at the beginning of future phase two. So phase one residents will be able to get their mail until at such time as a permanent site can be established.
Mr. Collins, even though it's a temporary cluster box, does it still have to meet? I know it has to meet the USPS ordinance, but does it still have to meet where they have to put a structure overhead with lighting and parking spots?
No, this will be temporary and it will be subject to USPS only. We understand that it's temporary. So what we don't want to do is do some burden, some cost that would be included on that. So whatever USPS would require, we would require them to do with the understanding that what takes place in the permanent phase one will include those those details.
Okay. Has it? A space been dedicated yet for a permanent cluster box?
There has. There is. There is space allocated for the permanent, but it doesn't it doesn't lend itself to construction at the beginning of the phase.
Okay.
But to be perfectly clear, Mr. Collins, there's not a temporary cluster box unit in phase one on any of these lots. Is that correct? Phase one, looks like there's no temporary cluster box unit.
That's correct, sir.
Okay, so how will residents receive the mail at that point in time?
Temporary cluster box will be placed on the phase two property as approved by the US postmaster.
Okay, so they'll develop the land, put the cluster box down where phase two will be built. But there will be, at that point in time, phase two will not be actually being built because it's in a second phase.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Okay, so a little awkward, but it still works.
I think the effort overall is just attempt to get phase one residents their mail until such time as we can install the permanent location. And that's the best solution that staff and the engineer I could come up with.
Thanks for clearing that up. Appreciate it, guys.
Yes, sir.
I make a motion we approve. Second. Anderson, Jenkins. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Thank you. Item two, new business, PC Resolution PCO nine dash twenty-one. Site plan Richville Estates subdivision phase two, twenty building lots on nineteen point six two acres. Map forty-three parcel twenty-three. Property owners Richland Estates LLC. Ms. Shulist, if you could read those comments for me, please.
Staff comments. Number one, applicant request for variance temporary USPS cluster box shown to not meet lighting, cover, and parking requirement per COF subdivision regulations, section four dash one one six. Item two, modifications to the roadway along Cox Pike for the turning lane details widened pavement in right-of-way extending within five feet of current right-of-way line. City staff recommends additional right-of-way dedication to maintain twelve and a half feet of gutter, curb, grass strip, and sidewalk area for future roadway improvements. Item three, update all right-of-way dimensions to show proposed legal right-of-way points and bearings. Item four, required infrastructure in proposed phase one area to be shown as phase two construction if phase one site plan fails approval. And item five, plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove of PC Resolution PC dash O nine dash two one.
Thank you.
Butler, let me qualify one item here. So before there's a motion, just so everyone is clear. As it relates to staff comment number two, that comment is informational purposes for a variety of reasons. The staff and I have no issue. As a matter of fact, we would be perfectly perfectly fine if the motion was made to approve approve this item with the staff comments with the exception of phase two, and I'll explain to you why. There needs to be some notice. The staff has to offer some notice to the planning commission and to the city when we run into an issue where there will be limited right-of-way for future development in such time as any any development were to take place. Specific to this section of road, our current regulations require that we have a fifty-foot right-of-way for roadway infrastructure. That's what the developer has proposed. That's what we have in place. There's no issue with that at all. What we don't have in our regulations is the consideration for additional lane widths on a city's right-of-way. As an example, in this area, there will be three lanes that take up Cox Pike because there'll be a turn lane that enters the subdivision. Each lane is about twelve feet. So what we need to do for future consideration is when we look at our rights-of-way widths, we need to we need to consider a fifty-foot right-of-way width for our standard roadway right-of-way and for every additional lane over two, consider an additional twelve feet. So in a perfect world, we would have we would have petitioned to have sixty-two feet of right-of-way instead of having the fifty we currently have. Fifty currently exist. We understand that. We're perfectly fine with that. We have no issue with the staff or the planning commission approving this absent of item number two. But we do need to make notice that there will be less than five feet of right-of-way between the lane and the border of the city's right-of-way. So in the future, if the city were to do sidewalks, any other thing, then we will need to obtain right-of-way for that. However, our current regulations don't require anything above fifty feet. So it's an oversight from no telling how many years ago. We understand that. We get that. So our suggestion would be approval of staff comments one, three, four, and five with the not considering item number two. That's for informational purposes and for future literature language adjustments within our regulations.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Item three, is that something that just really needs to get on the plans? Something that was wrong on the plans? The right-of-way dimensions?
Yeah, on on specific to this, this is a typo. There's a document that shows the right-of-way width as it relates to the width of Cox Pike at the entrance to the subdivision. There's one section of drawings that the number states it's a fifty-six-foot right-of-way, but it's actually a fifty-foot right-of-way. We would just request that all documents that show that be reflective of the accurate fifty-foot right-of-way if that's what exists.
And that was not one of the items that was at issue last month?
That's correct. Not that I recall. I'll say that.
Any additional questions?
Well, one question, just comment on my part, I guess. You know, number four, require infrastructure in proposed phase one area to be shown in phase two. Why didn't they do that in the first place? I mean, is that another?
I think that was just if the phase one was to fail, that they would have to put in the roads for phase one.
Right. I don't I don't think that's a requirement that they did not do that. I think that was in the event either one of phases failed for approval for site plan, then the infrastructure would carry over to the other site plan is where we were. I think that's just an an attempt to be cautious with the inclusion of site plan, construction plans.
All right. Thank you.
Or phase construction plans. I apologize.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Jenkins, Rainey. Any additional discussion?
Mr. Butler, just to just to clarify, the motion to approve would be with staff comments one, three, four, and five.
I can edit or amend my motion?
No, you don't have to. As long as you.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yes. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls.
Aye.
Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald, I apologize. Did you have something down there? Did you have anything? Did I read? Okay. Thank you, sir. Item three, new business, PC Resolution PC ten dash twenty-one. Site plan Westview subdivision phase one, hundred and twenty-two building lots on sixty-three point oh four acres. Map forty-six parcel forty-four. Property owners Kathy Biata. Ms. Shulist, if you could read for me, please.
Staff comments. Number one, show overbay road transition detail including milling, cutting, keying, and overlaying asphalt along existing roadway connecting to proposed roadway prior to pre-construction meeting. Item two, update road profile to match approved MDP typical road section. Item three, adjust roadway vertical curvature to meet AAS HTO green book values based on design speed of thirty miles per hour prior to pre-construction meeting. Item four, provide detail on removal of site distance obstructions at the overbay road intersection prior to pre-construction meeting. Number five, adjust radi of access drives to accommodate vehicle turns prior to pre-construction meeting. Item six, address pipe surcharge as indicated on reviewed plan set. Item seven, approved ARAPs, concurrents letters, stream buffers, and SWP P P must be submitted and approved prior to issuance of grading permit. Item eight, provide landscape plan sheets prior to pre-construction meeting. Item nine, amenity site plan to be approved separate from subdivision site plan. Item ten, overbay road widening project within Williamson County right-of-way to be finished prior to building permits one hundred plus being issued. Item eleven, plan set to be approved by all utility providers prior to pre-construction meeting. Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove of PC Resolution PC dash ten dash two one.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
This has a lot to do with what we've talked about at an earlier meeting about overby road having the two. There's two accesses into the subdivision, right? And one of them, we were talking about cutting it off. Isn't that right, Mr. Collins?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct.
That's the one we're talking about. Okay. And the other one was was too narrow. The other access was too narrow. So, okay, just to make sure we're talking about the same one. Okay.
Ma'am.
So there's a lot of a lot of items here about the about the roadway and so forth. Adjusting the speed to thirty miles per hour. Is that permanent there or is that what you're talking about here on item number three?
For the for the roadway design, it's just a very minor adjustment to the vertical of the road.
Okay.
There are very, very minor adjustments there. There's there's a few comments in here, but they're all very minor adjustments that we feel comfortable passing that forward just with a couple modifications to the plans without changing the character of the design.
And then are there plans to close that other road off then?
Yes, ma'am. Now, obviously, that would, this will have to be formalized at the BFC level. But the but the discussion, you may recall, there was a question about what was overby road and what was formerly Givens Cut.
Right.
The former Givens Cut is a section that's basically the straight road as you turn. It has a square intersection at Highway one hundred.
With the better sight.
Yes.
Better vision.
I believe New Overby Road, as it's called, is the the dogleg section of the road. So once this work is done, and what will take place here, just so you'll know where we are, we reached out a couple of times with the owner of the triangle property there. With their permission, the city did obtain at the city's expense and some work to be done on there, including having the property appraised so that we would know how much property needed to be acquired to widen the road and what the cost of that is. And we have since, once we received that appraisal, once I received the appraisal, I sent that out to the property owner so we can negotiate that with them. The widening of that road, because Givens Cut is not within the city limits of the city of Fairview, it's within Williamson County. The developer also met with Williamson County in person at Williamson County to explain to them what we were considering doing, which they were agreement with. So Williamson County is aware that we've obtained the appraisal. They understand that there will be a widening of that road to three lanes, which they are agreeable to. And once that work is done and once we get past the hundred building permits issued and that road widening is done, the proposal to the city will be to go in and vacate approximately sixty feet of right-of-way from Highway one hundred up New Overby Road. Whether we would either vacate that or we would close it permanently and maintain ownership of it. Where the road would be removed, we would grass and tree that area so it will appear to be a dead-end road with no access from Highway one hundred.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Thank you, sir.
And Kevin, you're saying these are minor things. It does seem like a long list, maybe weighing on minor versus tabling it for next month or something. Because it does seem like a lot of things on the plan that just need to be corrected.
Yeah, I mean, the list is a little bit longer. But but the the intent of the design is still accomplished with what what's been provided. It's just a few little minor tweaks that that really don't affect intended design. So just a couple little changes and it'll be ready for construction. But none of these would would affect, you know, detrimentally to the.
A second.
Anderson, Qualls. Any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Ms. Qualls. Ms. Shulist.
Aye.
Ms. Senyard.
Aye.
Mr. McDonald.
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins.
Aye.
Mr. Calley.
Aye.
Ms. Rainey.
Aye.
Mr. Butler.
Aye.
Thank you. On item four, I am going to accuse myself. I am not the developer on the property. I just represent the applicant on some other real estate property.
Resolution four, PC Resolution PC eleven dash twenty-one. Rezoning Highberry Point subdivision, twelve ninety-six, Highway ninety-six, map zero one eight, parcel zero three eight and zero three eight point zero two. Currently zoned CG Commercial General and RM eight PUD. Proposed zoning RM twenty and RM eight point three eight point two seven acres. Property owners Welling Corporation and Bevins. Stephen Hagan Joint Venture. Item property final plat is twenty zero twenty-one zero one two six point PDF. Action by the planning commission, motion to approve or disapprove PC Resolution PC eleven dash twenty-one. Any comments? Any questions?
Well, would y'all like to come speak on it? Because I know y'all had a lot more than we got document-wise, and I don't think y'all got the chance to speak with everybody. It's a nice presentation.
Ladies and gentlemen of the commission, members of the city staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight and present this 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 community. My name is Chris Pascarella. I'm principal with Pearl Street Partners. We're very excited to be before you tonight. I've been visiting Fairview for a couple of years now and but our company has been working and developing in middle Tennessee for sixteen years. We we've we waited for the right parcel of land, the right timing to come before you, and we really believe that we've we've done that. I appreciate the opportunity to come before you because I realize that what you were provided didn't have a lot of information. And we obviously will be back if we're fortunate enough for our rezoning to be approved. We'll be back before you for master development plan. But I did want to provide a little color to the rezoning that we're requesting and certainly answer any questions if you'll allow me. We one of the things we believe as a company is 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 that communities develop policies and land use guidelines for a reason. And that those policies and land use guidelines are done through, you know, a long process. And so when we enter a community and look for opportunities to bring value and develop neighborhoods, we we really try to identify parcels of land where we can pursue development that's consistent with land use policy for the city. And that's that's one thing we believe, you know, with this parcel, that our proposed zoning and our vision is consistent with the city's land use policy. We we also believe that our plan, which is to ultimately create a neighborhood that includes multifamily, upscale multifamily rental apartments. These will be market rate apartments. This is not income restricted. One of the things, as we've studied your community and some of the residential needs that we see maybe opportunities out there to fill, that was one area that that seemed to be a gap for for folks that either needed or wanted to live in multifamily apartments, but in some cases made too much money, and so we're not able to. And so we we are excited about the opportunity. Our company has a long history, especially here in middle Tennessee, delivering upscale apartment communities. Most the closest one that I could reference to here to Fairview would be in Bellevue, One Bellevue Place. We partnered with Crescent Communities and developed the apartments, which are now called the Sawyer on the as part of that master plan. We're very proud of the vision that we we bring to every community. And in addition to the multifamily, we are proposing a little over a hundred townhomes, two different styles and sizes. Again, working to achieve attainable housing for folks that maybe young young singles, young couples that may ultimately, as their careers advance, grow into larger homes within the Fairview community. But this provides them an opportunity potentially to move out of the rental and into the for-sale market. We've had the the good fortune to speak to a couple of members of the commission and get input and and feedback. And three things that have come out of that, that if I just maybe very briefly mention, that are important that we heard on a couple of occasions, is really a focus on open space, nature. And we fully intend to address that in a way that we hope you'll be very happy with as we come back for our master development plan. It's something that we focus on in our neighborhoods. One of one of the communities that I'm very proud to be associated with in Franklin is Lockwood Glen. And in that community, you know, we, one of our, you know, main focuses because of our proximity to the Harpeth River was our our focus on nature. Stormwater is critical. We understand that in some cases, there's been some flooding issues in areas, maybe some older subdivisions. And and this is obviously something we'd want to avoid, but obviously by code, we have to avoid it. We can't discharge more stormwater post-development than was there pre-development. But that being said, you know, our, we've got a tremendous civil engineer on our team, and we certainly expect and anticipate that that will not be an issue. And then finally, impact on roads. And, you know, I've heard there have been some communities and proposed projects that have that have been proposed to be on, you know, smaller roads, city streets that may be undersized. And that was another reason, quite honestly, we we chose this site. It's within a mile of I forty. We anticipate a lot of our residents may commute into town. And Highway ninety-six is obviously a state road designed for high volume. And so while there may be required, you know, turn lanes and what have you, we really felt like we were proposing a community that was on a road that was able to handle the capacity. So I appreciate the opportunity to be before you. We're very excited to be here. I hope this is one of many communities we're fortunate and blessed to be a part of in Fairview. I'm happy to answer any questions, and thank you for giving me the time.
Anyone have any other questions?
Did you say that it was, you said it was high-end rentals and mixed use?
No, ma'am. The the other portion of the community will be townhomes. So it is what we're proposing on the on the RM eight portion, two different types, sorry, two different types of townhomes to 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 try to target, again, different demographics and different price points.
Gotcha. And all all rentals?
The townhomes are, we're anticipating the townhomes to be for-sale townhomes. And and the other thing I neglected to mention is we we feel like we're also reducing the intensity of this site because it is currently approved for commercial as well as as RM eight, so, you know, some multifamily. So that was another thing I wanted to to make a point of as well. Thank you.
For clarity. For clarity, the two parcels, the one that you see towards the north side of the picture there, with the light tan buildings, those are the rental apartments. And then the second parcel down here, the brown buildings, those are the purchasable townhomes.
Yes, ma'am, this site plan anticipates 240 apartments in three-story buildings, walk-up apartments. One, two, and three-bedroom apartment homes. So, able to accommodate singles as well as families.
Well, the brown building that's in the middle of the white one's right across from the church? What, is that an apartment building too?
Are you talking about the one that is next to the little lake there, or the detention pond that's in and amongst the apartment buildings?
If that's a, yes, it's a pond.
Amongst the white roof.
That would be our, that would be the proposed location of our clubhouse and leasing office.
Okay.
So, we would have a main entrance off of Highway 96 in a four-way intersection. And that would be our, kind of our internal spine road. And the entrance into the apartment community would be right there to the right. This is a little washed out, I apologize, but you can see a little traffic circle there. And again, this is a conceptual site plan, but it, you know, it definitely addresses, you know, adequately reflects the number of units and homes, both on the apartment side and the townhomes. But that would be our leasing office.
So 10 apartment buildings?
Yes, ma'am.
Now, will there be an HOA or something on the for-sale side that manages grounds?
Yes, ma'am.
And are there any regulations on short-term rentals, or any plans for that?
We, well, certainly, you know, hadn't honestly considered it, but it's certainly something we'd be open to. We don't anticipate or in our, you know, planning on that. And if, you know, that was something we needed to write into our HOA covenants, we'd be happy to look at that. So, you know, we certainly aren't going to promote it, for sure.
What kind of maintenance will be required for the apartment building portion design?
Yes, ma'am, so, all of our apartment communities are professionally managed by third-party companies such as Gray Star. And so, again, I would invite, and would be, would love to tour any of you through our communities. But all of the exteriors, you know, is one, under one ownership. All of the exteriors are maintained by third-party professional landscape companies. I'm a, if you'd like to see us some examples of our communities, you can visit our website for Pearl Street Partners. I'm pretty type A when it comes to the maintenance. We're really passionate about architecture, very passionate about horticulture, and then making sure that it looks good for a long, long time. I love driving back through my communities years after they're finished and taking pride in that. So that's the way we take a lot of focus and focus a lot of focus on.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
What is separating the townhomes from the apartments? Is that just a road that I see there, or is there anything else there?
No, ma'am, that's our, so, you know, we really look at this as one community, I mean, per se. We don't want to necessarily create a, but the geometry and sort of the way that both would be created, do, they will need to be separated. And that's a spine road that will come down through the center of it. So it's a common road with sidewalks and trees to really, you know, promote getting out. And really, you know, we talked about, for instance, in one of the conversations we had here with some members of the commission, we talked about things we've done in the past. And for instance, our Lockwood community in Franklin, we have, very similar to this, it's a little bit larger, we've got about 800 total homes, about 240 apartments, and the rest, single-family and townhomes. And our community has done a great job of integrating, you know, food truck events, and Halloween, and, you know, Fourth of July parades. And so it'll be our goal to set those management companies up, because we'll be in control of it, obviously, for a period of time, to really create community. Our mission statement as a company is that we create places where people create memories. And I know that sounds really sappy, but it's something I'm really passionate about. And I've been fortunate to be in this business for about 30 years. And nothing gives me more pride than when I drive down to one of our streets and I see a sign out in front of someone's home that, you know, so-and-so is graduating from, you know, Fairview High School, or Franklin High School, or Independence, or what have you. And so we do, we really put a lot of focus on trying to create programming that helps build community.
So you're going to have 250 apartments?
240 is what we're planning.
240? What about, how many townhomes?
About 100, I think we're, just add 100 or a little bit over 100. And the overall site, I noticed there was a slight typo, it's almost, actually almost 40 acres, it's 38 and change, not 32, so I wanted to just mention that. So it's, it's a, one of the things that we were very focused on, especially on the multi-family, was to spread the site out, so that we had the opportunity to, I really wanted to avoid, you know, retaining walls and things like that. And as you can see, we've got two streams in the property, and we'll, you know, really celebrate those areas and, you know, perhaps create, you know, trails and things like that, that really encourage people to get out and experience nature. Again, at this stage, I know that, I guess technically, we're just here to propose that black and white plan with a line down the middle, but I really wanted to show you an early stage of where we are. And we'll add, there'll be a lot more detail and programming and vision when we come back to you. But it's something that we put a lot of emphasis on.
I have one more question, and then...
Of course, take as many as you'd like.
There's only one entry in and out, is that correct?
There is on the spine road, ma'am, but, and it's hard to see that, but for the multi-family, in the upper left-hand corner, there is a secondary entrance into the multi-family, so there will be two opportunities to come in and out.
Okay, that's good.
And going up is towards 40, right?
If you made a left out of the property, you're about a mile to I-40. So we're very close.
So you're going to have 500 to 1,000 people making a left on 96 if they're going towards Nashville, right?
Well, yeah, certainly, that's the total population could be around that. And one of the things we found is that everybody doesn't get in their car at 9:00 AM or come home at 5:00, even pre-COVID. We've studied that a lot. And what we find is, especially folks that live in, you know, especially multi-family, they typically have pretty flexible work schedules, whether they're working in healthcare industry or offices and so forth. For instance, our Lockwood Glen community, we've got, our apartment community is integrated. It shares the main entrance with the rest of the neighborhood. And we've got multiple entrances, but there's that one main entrance. There was concern from the community about that. And what I can tell you from now that it's three years old is there's been absolutely no impact on traffic and no backups, which was what we anticipated, and, you know, our traffic studies showed.
See, I've been so proud of myself, and I've been thinking, sitting here thinking, I knew exactly where this was. But now, since you have to turn left to get to I-540, I don't know where it is.
That big building right above it is the old Stewart Lumber Yard.
Oh, so that's the brick house? Okay, it's the bar.
Yeah, Veterans Park is straight across 96 from there, so that might give you an idea.
Well, I get for being smug. Okay.
Any other questions? Thoughts?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion and a first and a second?
If I may, I think it's worth mentioning that not only does this meet our current future land use map, but also if the 2040 comprehensive plan were to pass by the Board of Commissioners as it currently sits, this would also fall into that future land use. So, it's kind of a double.
Double plus?
Double plus.
All right, can we have roll call, please?
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls? Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you, sir, apologize. Move to item four, PC Resolution PC 12-21, a resolution to amend the City of Fairview subdivision regulations, Article Four, Section Four, 106, street design standards. If we could, Mr. Blackburn?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, so this one is basically an update to our general standards for roadways. It's been a, a thing that's come up on a lot of the plan reviews is that the vertical curve values that are used for vertical curvature design on roads were a little bit off from the industry standard. So basically, what this resolution would do is align the city standard with the industry standard. And instead of having, continually going back and forth as a comment on projects, this one would then put it in alignment with the green book and with basically the industry standard. And just, it's something that needed to be updated and addressed, and I think this is a good modification to that.
Can you describe what the modification is?
Yeah, so the, the vertical curve K-value, it is a, basically, it is the difference in two different grades coming together. And it's based on the speed. And so there's a minimum established to provide a vertical curve that achieves sight distance, so that it's not too sharp. And that you have enough stopping distance to be able to stop, to be able to see over the hill. So, the previous values, I don't have those in front of me, but this would align those with the green book and be based on the design speed. So, rather than having the local access street sub-collector, arterial collector, functional classification define it, it would be defined based on the design speed of the road. So if that design speed is different, if it's reduced in a subdivision, let's say, for safety concerns, you want to reduce the speed limit to 20 miles an hour. You wouldn't want to put an unnecessary vertical curve on a road. You would base it on the design speed instead. And so this simply just, instead of putting a value with each of those and not giving you flexibility based on the speed, it would allow it to follow those industry standard.
But my one main question is, you would not go back to the old curb system where they lay the curbing on top of the base coat of asphalt, which we used to call the toothpaste curb? That's the sorriest stuff they ever allowed to have. And so without seeing a drawing, I just taking your word for it, we're not going to go there.
Right.
Okay.
That's interesting, so curbs are based on the speed limit?
The rate of the curvature.
The rate of the curb is based on the speed limit?
Are we talking curb with a B and curve with a V? Because I think we're talking two words, because we have masks on.
Oh, yeah, I'm talking about like a curve in the road.
The radius.
The crest of the road.
Okay. All right.
That said, we don't want any toothpaste curbs either. We prefer that those be permanent and a little more durable.
Curve.
Curve with a V.
I make a motion, we approve PC 12-21.
I'll second the motion. Calley, Jenkins, any additional discussion or questions? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls? Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you, guys, we'll move to bonds. Item one, Sweet Briar Springs, Phase Two, Performance Bond, Marlin Cunningham, $150,000. Is this setting the performance bond, works been completed and inspected, is that correct?
Yes, it's a reduction in the performance bond based on site observation of completed infrastructure in accordance with the plans.
Thank you, sir. So it would be a motion to reduce the performance bond, if anyone wants to make a motion or has any discussion. I'll go to make the motion to reduce the performance bond for Sweet Briar Springs, Phase Two, to $150,000.
Second.
Jenkins, Rainey, any additional discussion? Ms. Johnson?
Mr. Jenkins?
Aye.
Ms. Rainey?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Calley?
Aye.
Mr. McDonald?
Aye.
Ms. Qualls? Ms. Shulist?
Aye.
Ms. Senyard?
Aye.
Mr. Butler?
Aye.
Thank you. We'll go over reports for discussion information, city planning staff, Mr. Sullivan?
Nothing tonight.
Sir, city manager, Mr. Collins?
Yes, just one on a 49, just a reminder to the Planning Commission members that next Thursday, on the 18th, we have a 5:00 PM work session with the Board of Commissioners and the developers for the Grove property, which I think has been previously marketed as the neighborhood at Bowie Park, although I believe they're in the process of changing or considering the change of the name. That work session will start at 5:00 PM. My belief is that most of that discussion, that discussion will take most of the two hours, and then we'll follow up with the meeting there. So we hope that each of you have an opportunity to attend to at least part of that, if you're available.
Thank you, sir. City engineer, Mr. Blackburn?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Thank you, sir. City attorney, Mr. Potter?
No report, sir.
Thank you, sir. We'll go to communication from the Planning Commission members, and we'll give a quick welcome to Mr. McDonald down there, Chris McDonald's first meeting. So at this point, you have any comments or notes for us?
No, I'm just excited to be a part of it. Been sitting on the sidelines watching you guys do what you do, and just happy to be getting involved and make Fairview great.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Jenkins? Bigful to have, congratulations for Commissioner McDonald to be a part of the Planning Commission. And that is all. Thank you, sir. Ms. Senyard?
Not too much, I just wish more developers would reach out like Highbury Point did. I think you all spent some time with him, I spent about an hour with him, and got a lot more details than he was even able to give here. And that was very informative, and would highly recommend other developers do that.
Thank you. Ms. Shulist?
Nothing from me, Dan, I'm sorry, I stole your seat.
Mr. Calley?
Nothing tonight.
Ms. Qualls?
Welcome, Mr. McDonald.
Mayor Rainey?
Nothing tonight, thank you, sir.
Mr. Anderson?
I would just like to say, I apologize on my hearing. I do wear hearing aids, but I don't think these masks are helping anything. So I'll be glad when this day and time is over.
Thank you, sir, I have nothing further, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved.